Meeting is called to order. And first order of business is to act on a request by a board member to participate in this meeting remotely. Mr. Jordan is requesting to participate in the meeting remotely while he's traveling from the Virginia School Boards Association in Charlottesville to the business meeting this afternoon. And so I need a motion to allow Mr. Jordan to participate in the meeting today remotely according to policy BDD.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Let me get Mr. Jordan on the line and then we will proceed.
We're sorry, we cannot complete your call as soon as possible. Please hang up.
Adenah. Mr. Jordan?
Hello?
Kirk Houston and the governance leadership team, we've called the meeting to order and voted to allow you to participate remotely. And now we are ready to continue on with the agenda.
Alright, thank you. I'll have you all on mute.
Okay. Alright, first item of business or second item of business, item 102, superintendent's evaluation planning. Two things I will note. One, on today's agenda and future agendas, you will see the designated time for presentations and the time designated for Q and A or discussion. And I would just encourage us to work very hard for our efficiency as a governance leadership team to abide by those times to the best of our ability so that we can treat each of the items on the agenda with the necessary weight and gravity. Having said that, we received the superintendent's new evaluation instrument some time ago with a request for comments or questions or recommendations. Subcommittee for this particular item is Ms. Doyle and Mr. Jordan. And I will give the this agenda item over to Courtney.
So as background, as you know, we were required this year to institute a new superintendent evaluation. And so we had the training, I believe it was in June here, and others had gone to training in Charlottesville even prior to that. So with the benefit of that training and some of the documents provided to us, Mr. Jordan and I were able to come up with a draft document that we then sat down with Dr. King to share and all put our good heads together in coming up with this current draft that you see. And what you'll see is that there are two additional domains this year, number one and number seven. And the feedback I got so far from the team, and I would like to go through the three points so that we can go through those and resolve those. And hopefully in a few minutes, what we'll do is basically move forward and say this will be our superintendent review for the year. So again, we've had the opportunity to review with Dr. King, and I think Dr. King, you'll find these slight modifications pretty minor. So one question I received so far was the scoring is now 1, 2, 3, 4. 4 is exemplary, 3 is proficient, 2 developing slash needs improvement, and 1 is titled unacceptable. There was a suggestion that that be changed, the word unacceptable to unsatisfactory. Is there any discomfort or concern about that change of that word? It would still represent the number 1. It's just simply a word change. Any concerns, issues?
I won't begin.
Good for you. I like that. Okay.
Why was it 1 through 4?
That was a state recommendation, and I think as a board, we had talked about that too with kind of how do you balance a 5 with a 3 in the middle? And so we, I know I recall from our last year's reviews, people were on the board considering 4 to be a better approach. And that was recommended through the training.
I have a response to that. And these kinds of instruments forcing people not to have a middle ground is intent. It's a forced choice thing. You don't, you can't say in the middle. You gotta say something. And so that going from 5 to 4, or 9 to 8, or 7, that's the purpose of going to an even number.
Okay. The other thought that was brought to my attention, question was for domain number 7, and if you'll maybe even turn to that page. Domain number 7 relates exclusively to student academic program. And it's basically about student academic achievement. And a question was asked, is this solely based on SOL measures? And the answer to that is no. During our training that we had, it was made clear to us that there are many examples of measures division wide that mark student academic progress. And let me just share with you a few of those. Progress on algebra readiness assessments such as the algebra readiness diagnostic test, reading and literacy, on-track indicators such as PALS screening or similar measures available, college and career readiness, participation and success in AP and dual enrollment courses, enrollment and achievement in post-secondary education, and increasing the percentage of students earning career and technical industry certifications, state licenses, or successful national occupational assessment credentials. They also range to non-academic core activities, i.e. the number of students or increased percentage of students involved in extracurricular activities, to increased percentage of students receiving prestigious awards. Some is related to STEM education, increase in the percentage of underrepresented students taking advanced STEM courses. Those are just some minor examples that were shared with us that are in addition to SOLs that could be considered as part of the measurement in domain number 7.
So I have a question about that. If we're gonna use this evaluation tool, would we want to list those criteria in the beginning, or would we want to let the school year play out and then Dr. King or then make a case that this is, these are other examples of academic progress?
How do you all feel? We could frankly play it both ways, but you know, Dr. King, let me just say this. I would say Dr. King is gonna presumably share with us all these other measures along the way.
I think it might be helpful to just have it as a footnote since it's 40% of the evaluation, just so that we know that not only is it SOLs, but it's also all of these other factors that are encompassed in that, to that category. And then that way, when he presents his data on that particular category, we know to look for advanced study classes, STEM classes, the algebra readiness test, PALS test. So I would just put it in as a footnote.
So something like multiple student performance measures will be considered for this domain, i.e.
Do include.
And list a few as just as examples.
Sure.
Right.
Good with that?
Yes.
And then lastly, one question was, could we add something that, under one of the performance domains, under a state performance indicator, could we add an additional one, which would state something along the lines of promotes and/or monitors and/or periodically evaluates specialty programs, i.e. in our case, pre-IB, EVMS, young scholars, et cetera. And in looking at that, if we wanted to add that, that could go under domain number 2 and 7 as those relate to academics.
2 or 7.
Right. So 7 again is student academic program and progress, and 2 is planning and assessment. So I-
And the wording again of that recommendation?
Promotes, monitors, and/or periodically evaluates specialty programs, to include pre-IB, probably STEM, EVMS, young scholars, just a plethora of programs that we have. Good with that?
Good with that.
Yeah. Are we comfortable with that addition? I can just add that to either 2 or 7? Does anyone have a preference, or are you just willing to let me make that grand decision?
I think 7 would be good, but I mean, either way.
Okay. I think it fits under both, but in any event, let's just go with 7. I think that works. Okay. Those were the three areas of feedback that I received. Is there anything in addition before we decide to move on?
Rodney still on the line?
Yep, Rodney put us on mute. Rodney, do you have any other thoughts or questions?
No, I'm fine.
So I think we should vote to adopt this estimate. And we could include it on the consent agenda or do it separately in this meeting. Any thoughts?
Consent agenda.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. King. Thanks for working on that with us. Rodney, thank you for doing that. So I think we're all ready to go.
And Courtney and Rodney, thank you both for your work on this matter.
Alright, very good. Okay, item 1.03, SOL results and follow-up. Last month, we did receive a presentation and report on the projected accreditation of schools as well as SOL results. And we have received since then a more definitive as well as comparative evaluation in what I consider to be a very, very good report, very informative, and of very positive outcomes. And so, Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board, we will begin with 1.03, school year 2014 SOL results follow-up. And I will travel through several levels of statistics related to performance and do it in a way that I hope will provide relevant pertinent information that links to really where we are, how we ended the year, et cetera. And so with that said, we will begin with high school and end-of-course tests. You can stop me at any given time to make comments or ask questions because this piece should not be new to you. We introduced this early, a few days back, but I wanna run through this so that you can see a snapshot of the year for us. And so what you have before you first would be the two-year comparison for end-of-course tests across five different areas. And if you just eyeball that, you can see that the positive is that we have posted gains on, in each of the five areas. However, as you've heard us mention before as a team, that because of our baseline, we're going to have to post consistent, persistent gains throughout to move us not only to a point where we have more and more children mastering standards on an increasing basis, but we're gonna have to accelerate the rate at which we do so. And that is indeed the item that's going to get us to full accreditation. However, the positive is that first you must begin that trend. And so we see some evidence here that that trend is beginning. And you'll see some information later on about what we see based on our research and analysis that will be important for us this current school year to raise the momentum to an exponent. So that's a snapshot of end-of-course tests before you. In addition, we are disaggregating the data. The initial bar graph that you saw is the aggregate, which you see here is very important for us as we know the vast majority of our 34,000 or so students are within economically disadvantaged subgroups. And we only mention that as a variable, a very important variable that must be used as we plan for success for our children. It is not a variable that should be considered, one that should interfere, as long as we do the things that are very important along the way to defy the norm. And so while we see the incremental increases, we would consider that the positive in the aggregate, but we also see the challenge within that positive. And you see that before you, I introduced this a few days ago again, but if you look at this, you see that our students that are not economically disadvantaged, non-economically disadvantaged, perform at the 90% level. And we wanna see that grow. And we see the gap between those students and the students that are not economically disadvantaged. And between that, you see the aggregate. So simply put, as we do this work and continue to do it and do it better each day, we look to see all of our subgroups grow towards the same high level of performance where you see the gaps closing. And so that's what that presents for us, and we'll talk a little bit later about what that means for us going into the coming school year 14, 15. Another phase of disaggregation relates to our ethnic categories, and you see before you the breakout of where our student subgroups have performed to make up the aggregate. We see the gaps that come into play here across subgroups with the African-American subgroup being the lowest level of performance and the Asian subgroup being the highest. And you see the gaps from the lowest to the highest. That's further confirmation of the fact that we have to close achievement gaps and also has implications for what we mentioned earlier, the challenge of closing achievement gaps between those that are economically disadvantaged and those that are not. Because within the non-economically disadvantaged and the economically disadvantaged subgroups will be all of these ethnic groups that you see here. So very important for our work as well as we hone in to the elements of the standard. So very important for our work. Further disaggregation centers on limited English proficient students, and you see where we were and where we are, as well as students with disability, as well as gifted students. And you see that we increased by 3% as it relates to limited English proficient students at the high school level. We remain flat with students with disability at 48%. And of course, we know we need to absolutely grow that figure. And those are things that we will be honing in on in terms of our plan for this current school year, as well as we are at the 98% level with the gifted group, but we're at, we were at 98% the prior year as well. So a pretty high figure, but again, we like growth. Moving on, math. And I won't spend as much time on each graph because initially I did because I wanted to give you kind of an explanation of how we're beginning to look at the data when we disaggregate. So I'll move through this pretty quickly because I wanna give you a chance to eyeball it because it tells you a, it gives you a visual in terms of what our work consists of. And so with math, you see that there are, we are beginning to see the incline in terms of performance, but again, the gap. And you see none compared to those that are economically disadvantaged. And this remains in the course test mathematics. Same breakout for the ethnic subgroups, but you see the wide variety of performance after, as it relates to the ethnicity. And of course, we are, we also have data that we're slicing and dicing, so to speak, that tells us the total number of children that we have within each one of those ethnic categories that fall in the non-economically disadvantaged category, as well as those that fall in the economically disadvantaged category. And so if one wants to know how we determine the format that we use for disaggregating the data, if you think back to the early years of No Child Left Behind, it was pretty definitive in terms of how you were to break those subgroups out. You start with the total subgroup in the aggregate, then you disaggregate based on your qualifying ethnic subgroups, and then you move forward with limited English proficient students as well as economically disadvantaged students, as well as students with disability. And this is no different than that. And so it is reflective of each and every one of our children. As a matter of fact, we also added on the gifted subgroup so that we can monitor, because that's important for us in our strategic plan, so we can monitor how we're doing with those students. As well as another piece that we are going to also pull out would be the, would be gender as it relates to the ethnic categories as well and some of the data that we've had. LEP, math. So I pause as you look at that. We have posted gains across each of those. Yet much work to be done, but we do see growth across those categories in math on the high school level with limited English proficient students with disability, as well as the gifted program in terms of where we were and where we are, where we ended the school year. We move forward to history. I mentioned to you last week that we realized that as we began to analyze the results, that science and history presented a common thread for us in that we saw that our challenge, one of our challenge, one of our challenges, really centered on the performance of our students across those two areas. And we're taking a close look at what that means from the state level because we were reading some information that's coming in from the state around systems that, and divisions that did not do well across certain subjects. And so I'll be interested in the amount of change at the state level compared to the amount of change that we experienced there. But going deep to determine what our root causes are so that we can respond to those. And so here you see the gaps again, although you do see some increases in terms of the overall performance, so that's a positive. Same comparison as we break out the ethnic categories. We see the common thread centers on our African-American subgroups being the lowest level of performance across the subjects throughout thus far. And our quest is to hone in on the elements of the standards for all of the students to determine which elements around which particular subgroups reflect the weak areas so that we can do a better job of continuing to address the, from a safety net standpoint, where those students are. But remember, at the same time that we do that, we also are honing in on the enrichment side, those students that are on target and those students that are exceeding target. So the top level performance, how do we ensure that we maintain that and take it to the next level? So the full range of the spectrum for that. History. So I'll pause here and you have a chance to look and see LEP, we slipped in that area in terms of decline from where we were to where we are this year, about a 4% change. SWD, state flat, 1% change with our gifted program, but still at the 96% level. But again, we wanna see increases there. As we move forward, SOL, science, in this area I mentioned earlier. So if you take a look at that, you see the gap again with that, although we do see slight increases across that. But when we're starting at a low baseline, again, we must accelerate the rate at which we improve. And that's our challenge, and those are the things that we're gonna have to do in reference to defying the norm. Again, a wide gap in terms of ethnic levels of performance. And the challenge and the trend has not changed here, and that's a requirement as far as our work plan for this current school year to hone in on these needs and ensure that we begin to move the needle on change around that. Science, limited English proficient, 5% change there, flat in students with, in the area of students with disability, and remaining at 94% with the gifted population there. So you notice I mentioned science and history prior to. Changing to middle school. So I'll pause and give you a chance to take a look at that. Five different areas. We posted increases in all areas with the exception of one, which was history, and only a slight increase in science. So again, that common thread. Again, the wide gap, as you see, economically disadvantaged compared to those that are not. Thus the challenge again. Ethnic category, the gaps and the challenge across the ethnic categories and the work. SOL, reading and writing. See that we improved, but we were extremely low from the baseline for SWD, though we did post 3% increase. We certainly will have to ramp that whole process up, and we will secure the information for students identified as gifted at the middle school level and populate that as well as once, as soon as we have that. Remember, and I don't think I said that, it does say preliminary here, but these are internal results and done manually through our research assessment and accountability department, which means that it can change each day. And so we will modify this once we receive the final numbers from the state, and we'll adjust all of our graphs to reflect in a definitive sense those results. So you see the notion here, the inclines with math and middle school SOL. Again, you see the common thread across the gaps from the ethnic subgroups, wide gaps. I'll pause here. SOL, math, middle school, increase across LEP, limited English proficient, slight increase with SWD, and we will populate the gifted population as well. Elementary, five categories. You see here, we showed increases in 3 out of 5, decline in history and a decline in science, and a slight increase in reading. So thus the challenges here that we've pinpointed across elementary schools. Same concept, when we compare economically disadvantaged to those that are not, and the aggregate and the gap. Again, same concept with the ethnic categories. As we take a look at LEP, reading and writing, we see a change from 91 to 83, which is significant. And we are taking a look at that because that's a significant amount of change from 91 to 83. So we wanna take a look at that, of course. Change in SWD, 2% increase there. Again, baseline was low, so we have to accelerate that. SOL, elementary math, you see the gap. However, you see that we are getting better, but that's relative. And the challenge is clear in terms of what we need to do here. Again, huge gap as it relates to the ethnic categories and the needs there. So common threads across all three levels as it relates to ethnicity and the things that we need to do. But while we have gaps across each of those, gaps are wider in certain areas as compared to others as it relates to subject areas. Math, LEP, we see that we posted increases in each of the three areas here. 5% increase as it relates to LEP, 8% increase for SWD, and then slight increase in the gifted program to 95%, but of course, work to be done. histogram is just further confirmation of the things we just talked about with scoring and a percent level performance for students that are economically disadvantaged compared to those that are none. And before I move to the next piece, I wanna, wanna close this with this statement that I think we have to be very clear around, and I mentioned it earlier. When we talk about the whole notion of economically disadvantaged versus none, that is an important variable. However, that is not a variable that should interfere in the establishment of high standards. And also, it is not a variable that should interfere in the level at which children can perform and achieve. The issue here is that we must do the work differently to see the whole notion of defying the norm. As we understand, we have the variance around those families and those populations, and so what does that mean? That simply means that many times our children come to us with gaps. And we know that beforehand that that's going to happen. And when we know that, we have to plan accordingly, which means that it has implications for how we train our teachers in terms of differentiating instruction, in terms of making safety nets a non-negotiable, in terms of making those diagnostics and those common formative assessments a non-negotiable. But make real-time decisions based on those. And so that's gonna be important for us going forward. We see that we're getting a little bit of a push because of that whole concept of doing the work, but once it manifests itself throughout the division, that's when we see a huge amount of change as it relates to that. And I will mention to you, there are several things that the team has talked about which would be a good segue into the work plan for this going into this current year. Because from this analysis, we have begun to take a look at what this means for us going into the new school year and what it means for us in terms of goals that we know we have to pinpoint going forward. And so we're gonna talk about that as well. But before we do that, I wanna mention that through our research, we pinpointed six items that we know will be important for us going into this school year, important period. And one of us, one of those is that we must focus on what we can change. So what does that mean? That it matters not whether a child comes to us from an economically disadvantaged household or a non-economically disadvantaged household. That it matters not whether a child comes to us from an economically disadvantaged household or a non-economically disadvantaged household. We must diagnose where they are, determine their strengths and their weaknesses, and to develop plans to move them move them forward from that point. And not utilize that status of economic disadvantage as a quote-unquote excuse for why a child will not perform. And so the research is very clear around urban systems that defy the norm and get worked on, and that's one of the items that they mentioned. A second item that they mentioned is that divisions like ours, in order to defy the norm, should leave nothing to chance as it relates to teaching and learning. When you when you speak of leaving nothing to chance as it relates to teaching and learning, it means several things. One, some high expectations for all and being very adamant about that happening as well as collaboration across individual schools, common planning, common conversation around the needs, review of artifacts and evidence, et cetera. And interestingly enough, another one of those items that link to that second piece, when we say we leave nothing to chance as it relates to teaching and learning, centers on the fact that systems like ours that defy the norm, they take snapshots every four to eight weeks around how children are doing. And so you know what that is, that's those are common formative assessments, benchmarks, et cetera. The third one is that I mentioned the setting of high goals, but they focus on graduation. They focus on college readiness and career readiness. Fourth item, obsessive about instruction of time, instruction of time should not be wasted. That means that the master schedule should be developed based on the needs of students, not the adult agenda. The fifth item, principals are highly important, extremely important, and you've heard me mention that before, but they are not the only leaders in the school. That other set of leaders would consist of your teacher leaders. Those teacher leaders are engaged, they collaborate, they work together, there's common language. They review artifacts and evidence. They 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 observe each other in classrooms during planning time, and they utilize that information to make real-time decisions. As it relates to that snapshot, the four to eight weeks on those common formative assessments, not only do they take those snapshots, but they make decisions based on what those snapshots tell them. And so those are things that we have to do to strengthen that process. And the last one is to know how much teachers matter, you know, that the fact that what teachers do are important. Content is extremely important, but when we say know how much teachers matter, it means the teacher behavior in the classroom is what we mean. The high yield strategies, the highest yield strategy centers on the fact that teachers are serving as facilitators, meaning there's student-focused activity going on in classroom. So we call that the doing mechanism, they are actually engaged, the students are engaged. There's peer-to-peer interaction, there's collaboration, there are collaborative groups in the classroom, and the teacher serves as a facilitator throughout. Those six things we know we have to train around in terms of professional development this year to ensure that we have even more effective teachers. And we have to develop our leaders to the point that they know how to do the things we just mentioned, model it, and see it manifest itself throughout the classroom. So I'm going to shift gears here to ask Dr. Bailey to join me in terms of closing out last year with just some 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 items from each priority around the things that we thought went well and what that means for us going forward into this current school year.
Dr. Bailey?
Straya. Still engaged in in the work process.
All right, I'm pressing it down.
Yes. Okay, while Janelle is pulling up the PowerPoint and whatnot, this portion of the presentation is a follow-up of a presentation that Dr. Linda Sabigny provided for you several weeks ago. I apologize, she's out ill today, and so I'm pitch hitting for her today. What we have done is taking a snapshot of each of the priority areas for you so that it could give you a view of what we are doing as we transition from our spreadsheet document that has a lot of information into a format that is already on board docs, and we're in the process of completing that. The first item. The first priority area is dealing with priorities one and two, certainly improving academic progress as well as all schools meeting and exceeding standards and being fully accredited. And what you have here is one of our action plans that we have reviewed. I have drawn a line through some wording that we have been allowed to modify from its existing presentation to maybe make it more clear. What we have is a specific result, performance measure as it is outlined by the baseline, target, and status. What department is responsible, the impact on student achievement, as well as the year of implementation, new funding required, and then some brief notes. As you review this, this particular item looks at the expansion of pre-K assessments. The assessment that we use primarily is derived by our B D O E is our PALS assessment, which stands for phonological awareness literacy screening. We are working with B D O E to implement another assessment that is more comprehensive and give us more information on literacy. As an extension of this particular item, going to the next slide, what I have done is teased out the benchmarks for that particular assessment. So you could see the baseline, which was the two thousand thirteen, as well as the target, certainly is one hundred percent of all students, meeting the benchmark, and then our current status as of spring two thousand fourteen. So if certainly if we went test by test, we could see, starting with name writing, prior to this year, we were at ninety-eight percent of students meeting the benchmark. And this year, we're still at ninety-eight percent. So as you go down and evaluate each individual one, you could see where we seem to be okay and where our challenges are and where we need to do more.
Just to just to add to that, Dr. Bailey mentioned the whole notion of the study of of a PALS assessment and how valid and reliable it might be. There are some questions around that. We think that it is serving the purpose for us to make decisions right now, but that we could probably have a richer decision-making process. We've partnered with some some state-level entities to take a look at another mechanism to do this. And so we're eager to 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 move forward with that and receive further data from that particular assessment to see if it can help us inform our decision-making as we go forward. Because early learning is extremely important for us. And really, where the rubber meets the road is that whole notion of ensuring that children are reading on grade level and above by third. And so, and this is where it begins, okay? What's up, Scott? Go ahead.
Moving on to another action plan that we have taken to illustrate today, deals with our quarterly analysis of district common formative assessments. While it talks about an integration of academic support systems, we feel that it's more than just the CFAs. Certainly, the outcomes for this particular measure would be the accreditation status, the S O L results, as well as the implementation of our common formative assessments using our school net application. And so what I've done here for you is created the baseline, which are our accreditation status, our S O L results and C F A results. And that was provided to you at the end of last school year. Certainly, our target is for all schools to be fully accredited and to all students, one hundred percent of students meeting and exceeding standards. And so therefore, we're at that point where we're sharing your current status of our accreditation as well as our S O L results have been shared. And throughout the year, we have shared our C F A information. And we, and specifically, we talked about what type of, as a result of the analysis of CFAs, what type of professional development did we or did we provide based on strengths and weaknesses that were identified? We also outlined specific support for our priority and focus schools. And certainly, our CFAs are designed as a diagnostic instrument to accelerate and remediate the delivery of instruction. It is also designed to capture mastery of the standards. Our S O L certainly is a minimum competency test. And so throughout the year, it is to inform us as to how they're doing against the standards, with the summative being the S O L of our students. What I did also here is I teased out S O L math, just to give you another illustration of how this information then will be captured. We have the S O L results for math broken out by elementary, middle, and high, and of course, for last year. Our target certainly is one hundred percent students meeting and exceeding the math benchmarks as well. And so this year, our preliminary results show that we're sixty-seven percent in elementary, fifty-nine for middle, and seventy-seven for our high, and of course. Our content coordinator in math has outlined what areas that we showed improvement on, which is highlighted here in number and number cents at all school levels. We also have outlined our challenges that exist, measurement and geometry at the elementary level, combination of number and number cents at the middle school level, and the challenge of on the use of triangles with respect to geometry. This information is, the S O L information is also teased out by student performance by question information so that we're able to look at smaller segments of the data so we could see how we're performing as well as where we need to focus our efforts for for this year. So certainly, that has been done, I did not outline it here, but we do have that information. It was indicated that our middle and high school, as it relates to technology-enhanced items, are fairly familiar with that process. However, our elementary schools probably need a little bit more practice as it relates to the T E I items. Priority three, we teased out some discipline information. Looking at discipline and fractions, certainly that impacts the delivery of instruction in the classroom. And so it has a direct impact on student achievement. Other measures that will be teased out in support of this particular plan is suspensions. Now, strategy, I mean, priority four is relates to a board of distinction. And I believe that's something that you all are already working on. So moving on to priority five, we have highlighted the principal for a day program where the baseline was fifty-five. The measure was to increase ten percent annually, ten percent annually of the baseline would have been five point five. Add it to that gives us sixty point five. And so our current status was a flat sixty-one participants, and so therefore, we met this particular goal. Priority six, dealing with technology. This is another action plan where we have slightly tweaked it to include implementation of our Microsoft environment and implementation of our student information system. And so therefore, you have some information, some detailed information related to that. And I won't get into any details unless you have some questions, but it does have a direct impact on student achievement. And lastly, priority seven, looking at highly qualified teachers. This is a measure that has been in place soon after the beginning of N C L B. And you can see that our current status is at ninety-nine percent as an urban district. And this concludes this portion.
With that said, you also were provided a document that has this appearance. This is linked to where we see ourselves thus far in terms of the analyses that you heard across elementary, middle, and high school. And it goes on to pinpoint those things that reflect growth and also those things that reflect challenged challenges. And I'll just point out a couple of those bullets. And and the top one to the left states that forty of our forty-five schoo- forty of our forty-five schools posted improvement from two thousand thirteen to two thousand fourteen in one or more areas that determine state accreditation, and eighteen schools eighteen schools had double-digit increases. As we say that, we open with those positives, and we always want to see positives. However, we also look for, so what does that mean in terms of opportunity for growth? Opportunity for growth is huge because of our baseline. We're starting where we are, we've got a pretty steep climb. So all those things must continue. We had a school that moved from the warned category into full accreditation. At the same time, we had a couple of schools that moved from full accreditation into the warned category. In one of those cases, it was by one point that they missed that particular benchmark. So when you when you sum it up, we know that one and two matter. Priorities one and two matter. Priority number two is of utmost importance because it's it relates to the percentage of students that meet and exceed standards. And we must increase that in order to get to the one hundred percent mark as as it relates to full accreditation. I urge you to read the document carefully because it does give you a pretty deep, comprehensive display of the positives and the challenges. And I applaud the research assessment and accountability department and all others that work together to begin to continuously disaggregate the data in a way that we know we expect to, as well as our communications department with putting it together in a format that that I think is 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 a good one. You also have information that that indicates to you where schools were as it relates to accreditation over a two-year period and those changes. We presented that information to you last week as well, that is also provided for in your document. I did that pretty quickly because I wanted to quickly shift gears to the work plan for the upcoming school year, two thousand fourteen, fifteen. You have provided for you, it's entitled two thousand fourteen, fifteen work plan goals. Know that these goals are linked to what we know we see right now from the summative analysis of the summative analyses of the results as it relates to S O Ls and other indicators. And you will find in those documents, I'm not going to read each each of these to you because you have a chance to review it, but you'll find in this work plan that we address each of the seven priorities, but we also pinpoint behavioral objectives, objectives and behavioral terms, I should say, that indicate the important elements for us this year going forward. And so for one and two, I would say to you that the important item going forward would be to to get better each day with validity and reliability around our formative assessments so that the results that we receive from those will allow us to make quick, real-time decisions that will move children forward in a positive way. So you'll see that across elementary, middle, and high schools. And you heard us mention the research around that should be done every four to eight weeks, and you'll see reference made to that. It's outlined here, it's linked to the action plan and the strategies. You also will see the baseline that in terms of where we are right now, the baseline will change depending on what we come back with from the state. And you also see that we are populating the targets and the absolutes as it relates to our work going forward. So that, those first two pages really pinpoint our goals and the work for this coming school year related to the analysis of the data for priorities one and two. That's page one, two, and three. As you get into the fourth page, we move into priority number three. And the first item that you see there in terms of the goal is to monitor the climate of schools utilizing both quantitative and qualitative measures. And we pointed you back to action plan thirty and strategy number four, and you have a chance to take a look at that because that's of utmost importance to us based on the analyses that we have received and have done for the data thus far. Also instituting a culture and climate shift related to improving internal and external stakeholder relationships. And so you'll see also there in the work plan for fourteen, fifteen, the items that we deem important right now. This is not all-inclusive, these are things that we know are important for us as we begin to prepare for this current, this coming school year. The following page moves on to priority four, a board of distinction, where I noted an item there for for the board. Of course, the board will will modify this because this is actually something that the board works Of course, the board will modify this because this is actually something that the board works very closely with. But the board and superintendent shall act as a governance team in its implementation of the Norfolk Public School Five-Year Strategic Plan. That's a given. We were committed to quarterly reports and assessments. And so that's outlined there. And so additional goals will be pinpointed for that. Number five, Guiding Coalition of 100 Community Partners. That relates to how we work collaboratively with our community. And so that's going to have, that must continue to be ongoing as you, you see several goals around number, item number five, priority number five. Move on from there to priority number six relating to technology and relating to the capital end of the work. And number six speaks to increasing the technology used to connect stakeholders and to improve access to information and resources. All the things that we've talked about in reference to our students needing to, in, in every building, needing to increase connectivity. We know that high stakes tests are required to be taken online. And not only are we interested in the infrastructure, but we're also interested in our students being very proficient as it relates to technology. And we talked about our students powering down as they enter, as they enter our buildings and then power up when they leave. So we have to build the infrastructure to, to see that change. So we're committed to that. And I know you are too because you modified some things in terms of the policies to help us with that. You will also see, and I'm rushing to close here because I think I was told I had two or three more, two, three minutes, I think, before discussion. Alright, so the last item, item seven, attracting and retaining. Work plan for 14-15 is provided for you. Again, this is an initial facet of the work plan, but it, it is designed to hit the major areas based on what we think we see right now with preliminary analysis of results. Attracting and retaining effective teachers at all priority and focus schools. We talked about the whole notion of differentiating hiring to ensure that we are getting highly qualified, not just highly qualified, but highly effective people in priority and focus schools. In all schools, but definitely in those schools because we have to accelerate the rate at which we increase. We're seeing some increases in terms of those, many of those schools. But in some cases, we see slippage. But we have to get the effective individuals in the classroom to see this move to the, to the level that we want. The last item that you see there speaks to attracting and retaining principals and assistant principals in priority and focus schools as well. I close by saying that for us, in addition to those six items that I mentioned from the research that allow urban systems like ours to defy the norm, that's our training, that's our work for this year. Also, our work and training for this year must center on building more and more highly effective teachers as well as the highly effective leader. So that's the principal leader as well. So we're looking to adopt a customized model and module for us in terms of training, continuous training for our principals, moving them from where they are forward in terms of being able to do the work real time, but not theory. Utilizing our own body of work from each individual school, analyzing the data, being able to understand that analysis and making real-time decisions based on that. And then translating that into the cycle for the results and, and modeling that so that we can train our teachers to be able to ensure that they are using those strategies that we mentioned about high yield strategies, collaborative groups, teacher as facilitator. How do you do that? How do you train? How do you ensure that you have common conversations around those? So that gives you also the targets on the last page, but that's not new to you. But this, this is designed to give you enough information to begin your conversations. You, I believe endorsed again the seven priorities as, as being of continuous importance. And I think your, your next item that you had on your list was to talk about, okay, what are the implications for the goals? If they're any different than the, the priorities that are there. So hopefully the information that we provided for you gives you the picture of what we've been, where our strengths are and what our challenges are as well. But also a taste and a flavor for what we're going to begin to do as a result of what the data tells us. With that, I close.
Thank you. And we, we have a good bit of time designated for Q and A and discussion as this is part of the most important part of, of our work. So let me see if I can kind of guide our, our discussion in our Q and A period here by going back to the SOL results. And of course, additionally, we have the preliminary school accreditation ratings and comparative information relative to each school and last year and this year's test results. So I would ask first, are there any questions or comments directly related to the SOL results? And then we'll, we'll move to, to, to the goals and just a few. Warren?
Just one little small figure under TBD to be determined under accreditation. It lists six. I see those six as elementary. And I'm guessing I, I figured out which one they are. Do you want to share more about that?
Right. They're not all elementary. Like for example, Booker T. Washington is TBD as well. And so this means that conditional request was delivered. And whenever we decide that we want to recommend that we go for a conditional status, it's because there are examples of growth and improvement within those schools. They may have fallen short of the absolute benchmark, but then there are examples around which these schools have grown. I can tell you one example for, since Booker T. is the one that is at the top, is TBD. If you take a look at where they were with their graduation index, I believe it was around 71, 73 last year. And this year, we're predicting that they moved a double, double-digit increase from 71 to right around what? Eighty-five, eighty-three, somewhere around that.
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three? Okay. Well, in the seventies to the eighties, let's just say, because I don't have my numbers in front of me. But, but that's an example of, of the kind of thinking that will go into this from the team to determine whether we make a request for conditional.
So at this point, and thank you, it's helpful, moving it one step further. When might we determine if the TBD is moving any of them into a more favorable light?
Certainly, the, the process involves appealing to VDOE. And I believe they will have their meeting sometime in September. And then they will let us know then what that decision will be based on our appeal. Our appeal process involves capturing various information that is required in order to appeal that accreditation status.
Is it possible just, I'm predicting I know the answers. Possible just to tell me the others that, that we've, we requested that further consideration on?
Certainly, we have requested it for Lake Taylor Middle. And we have also requested it for Tybord Park.
Thank you. But that, that comes to three. Is, are there six or are there three more?
Well, there's three others that are TBD. And they are bordered on, along the lines of not being fully accredited within a certain time period.
Yes.
And so the state then provides a status on those schools. And we have not seen that yet.
Any way to tell us what those other three are? Just curious?
Oh, those other three? Yes. Ruffner Middle.
Yes.
Camp Prestella.
Yes.
Elementary and Lindenwood Elementary.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Other questions, comments? Yes.
Do you have an idea in your head of how many of our schools are going to be accredited with warning three years in a row for next school year?
I do have that information. I have not looked at that at this time. But that is something we will be looking at as we move into September.
Right.
Because that will affect our plans and support for schools.
Right, right.
I'm encouraged by what I see with the elementary schools because that will create momentum moving into the middle schools. So it will improve those test scores and beyond into high school.
I actually have a few statements that I think are very positive. And that is today, I want to thank you all for sharing this data because I really think it demonstrates great growth and progress, which is what we said we needed to do and you've put into place the actions that have now resulted in this great improvement. So again, this time last year, you were talking about putting the curriculum in place. You did. And now here's the result, which is just fabulous. And frankly, you've seen that a lot of our students have achieved at a very high level. So that's huge. That's wonderful. And we acknowledge that many of our children face great challenges and lack the support that some others enjoy. So we have to acknowledge that we have challenges in our own division that do lead to some of these scores. But we are very interested in supporting and helping all children. And I think that we really need to appreciate the principals, the teachers, and the students for all their hard work. I mean, this has been a very difficult year for everybody. And so everybody's worked very hard. And I think we need to acknowledge the great work. Again, these scores are excellent in terms of showing progress. Now, did we meet all the accreditation yet? Perhaps not, but we're going in the right direction, which is what you said you would do. And I appreciate Dr. King, your comment about, that's very good. We just need to accelerate the pace of change. So I think that's a good distinction to make. And so I frankly am very proud of the direction we're heading. And I appreciate the disclosure of this data in a way that's very understandable from year over year so that the community and all of us understand where we're headed, where we've come from, and what the, what the aim is. So thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Mr. Jordan, did you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, just a couple. One, I thought the, the chart that was put together, the literature that shows the strength and weakness was a very good chart. Couple of comments that I would ask for us to look at. When we talk about beating and achieving standards, if there's some way to look at how we're doing against advanced placement, that's not advanced placement, but advanced proficiency test, advanced scores on some of our SOL tests. I think right now we primarily look at the pass rate. But being able to get some breakdown on how our students are doing at the top level of the scores broken down across subgroups would be something I would suggest that we look at. And then likewise, Dr. King mentioned earlier in terms of the social economic disadvantage of the free and reduced lunch status. That we know that there's free lunch and then we know that there's free and reduced lunch. Kind of being able to look at, are there any differentiation between the students that are eligible as the free lunch status and those that are eligible as the free and reduced lunch status? And then finally, when we talk about the poverty rates at our schools, we know that there are some schools that may be at 16, 55% and other schools that are at 85 and 90%, but that's what they call the hyper-poverty schools. And at those schools, typically they are also predominantly African-American. So as we look at the, these subgroups, if we can determine how students are performing at our hyper-poverty schools and some of our lesser poverty schools. And just to try to make sure that we are providing all the different supports that are needed in the same regard, we can talk about that a little bit more in the, in the work plan. Maybe if we can look at some of those additional disaggregated data, it might provide us some opportunities to even push more at the civilian level as we can see that in the work that we're doing in the, in other schools.
Yes.
Mr. Jordan, the plan is, is centered on that. And I briefly mentioned earlier that we are, we are beginning to, to take a look at the total number. If we consider the total number, 34,000, for example. When you break out the economically disadvantaged categories and the non-economically disadvantaged categories, then you break out the ethnic categories. What, what do we have as the total number of students enrolled in our district in each of those categories? And then within each one of those categories, subgroup ethnic-wise, how many of those students qualify as economically disadvantaged? For example, the African-American subgroup. And what percentage of that African-American subgroup qualifies as economically disadvantaged? What percentage of the white subgroup? What percentage of Hispanic? What percentage of Asian? So then it, it begins to tell us, you know, what the implications are for educational levels and households. Again, not as an excuse, but in a way that we know how to deliver services, even reaching out into the community in terms of the adult piece and training and readiness for what we need to do to prepare children. So that's, those are the kinds of numbers that we're beginning to also look at from a disaggregating standpoint as well.
Yeah, so I thought that was great that you're going in that direction.
Thank you. I, I certainly get all the comments of Courtney regarding acknowledging and celebrating the progress we've made. Certainly, we know we have more challenges and needs to address. But I think thanks are in order. And I, I agree with your commendations to both the senior leadership as well as our principals and teachers and students. And I think as we encourage them in this work, we will continue to see even better results as we, as we move forward. Regarding our goals, typically, we would begin the year with about seven or eight, and a huge, high, high-level goals. And, and I know that all of these goals that you have noted here, presented, are, are important and to the, to the work and to continued progress. I think our discussion now should center around, for me, it's not about whether or not we keep these goals. Because obviously you have analyzed, you and your team, the current state and status of, of the work. And I found all of these necessary for continued progress. But simply for the purpose of governance leadership team, superintendents, big goals for the year, I think we need to consider, do we want to embrace 23 goals as we have here? Or do we want to look at somehow a discussion around narrowing them down to kind of the top 10 as it relates to these seven priorities? Warren?
I do not want to hold the process up. But I know that we are talking at last about the milestones issues. And I would certainly want to reserve the opportunity for something to come out of that between now and November when we have more time next month.
Right.
And more time in October to begin processing them. Just for example, it's very clear that folks, as we are challenged with free and reduced lunch populations, with poor students, with a great deal of changes because since 2009, that more time for learning is going on all across the nation. And that we may be considering that along with 18 other items. So I want to reserve the opportunity for something to emerge from those chats that we're going to have. And I would hate to finalize everything right now with, in advance of having those chats as a governance team, beginning today with the return of a preparation worksheet. And then next meeting with some chats and, and further. So I, I, I just want to leave some flexibility for something to emerge from that.
Okay. Alright. Other thoughts?
I would also suggest that we might look at, you know, the big rocks as some examples would be. We know we're undergoing the transformation initiative. And so we're doing the reconfiguration K to two, three to five, the three to eight program IB. And then the planning for next year's iteration of the transformation. So I think that's kind of a big rock that we would want to focus on. Just again, transformation. Another of the budget. I don't know about you all, but in my world, if we don't meet our budget, that's not a good year. So we always like to have budget as a goal that we're going to come in.
As designated by budget.
And then school construction obviously is huge too. So that's kind of a neat, another just big bucket is that we are successful in implementing school construction as to be designed. And then of course, I think that Dr. King and his team have captured in large part a lot here as it relates to academic achievement, which is another kind of big bucket. So for me, I kind of see four big buckets, which is academic achievement, which they've outlined in great detail here. We always have to meet our budget. We have school construction on the horizon. And we also have transformation that is forever ongoing and developing along with all the other things that we're doing. But I see those as the big ones.
Transformation, you know that's a big one, right?
Yes. And that's all encompassing, not only just the K to two, three to five, or the three to eight, but also we were looking at CTE, we were looking at open campus. So there's just some big things that fall into that. I don't want to delineate it because transformation transformation has been outlined actually quite well. We don't need to go into detail. So...
Miss Banks.
Yeah, I'll dial it back in a second here. Go ahead. I'm sorry, were you done?
Yes.
Okay.
One more bucket, increasing average daily membership.
Okay, so, I want to make sure we're on the same page as it relates to our goals for goals. Typically, in the summer, normally July, the retreat, is when we would agree upon about seven or eight big goals for the year. And those are the goals by which we not only evaluate superintendent, put monitoring measures, progress, and success of our work for the year. And so, whatever we decide upon, it ought to be something that's measurable, and that we can track over, no money, over this school year period. So, whatever those goals were, in October, we will be able to look at them and measure progress. And January, maybe evaluation time, the same. In the spring, then of course, in the summer, at the end of the school year. So, whatever we agree upon, and it may be a part, just as the targets and absolute targets. So, it may be a part of a bigger goal, and we have the target just for this year, for that particular area. But certainly, in my opinion, should be goals associated with some target for this year, and they're clear, that we can track and measure as we move through this year to determine our success. And so, I'm not disagreeing with any of the buckets, but I think that as we clarify these and embrace them, we need to make sure, what do we see in June as the target? And then, how do we, you know, monitor and measure the progress throughout the school year quarterly?
And if I could add, I would say that, for instance, the ones that I named, there are already goals associated with us. So, much rolls up to that, that we wouldn't necessarily have to create a new numeric value to that. It's already given. Now, the average daily membership is not quite that.
How do you address that?
You're asking, no?
Yeah.
Well, I think it needs to be something that we focus on, because that's how we're going to increase funding for our district. And if one of our priorities is to attract and retain strong academic families, we need to work on the transfer...
I'm not disagreeing with you about it. I'm just saying, how do we do it?
How? Well, we can open up more slots for our specialty programs, such as IB, young scholars, or EVMS, and that would attract more families.
From outside the district, you mean?
Or within the district, because I'm sure that there are plenty of folks within our district that are going to private school, that would maybe enjoy the opportunity to go to these programs. And then, again, as I have mentioned several times, is your pre-K classes for those families who don't necessarily qualify for the pre-K classes that we offer. Again, Norfolk is one of the only cities that offers full-day kindergarten. There are many, many private institutions, mostly faith-based, that are offering pre-K education. And some of these academic families, or some of these middle-class families are going to these options. And then, the next step thereafter is, well, go ahead and enroll into this private institution, versus if we bring them into Norfolk Public Schools, then they're more likely to stay. And then, oh, guess what? We have young scholars for you while you're in middle school, and why don't you just go ahead and transition into pre-IB? And so, we just make the incentives that much more enticing if we can bring them in early on. And right now, in hard economic times, when families are looking at, do I want to spend ten thousand dollars for pre-K education, or send them to a very good, highly qualified, academically enriched program at Norfolk Public Schools, that is a very enticing option. And I can say that with personal, real-time experience.
A couple of reasons.
And I can say that with my friend group as well. So, that's how I would increase average daily membership to start with. Very easy to do.
Easy to start a pre-K program for middle-class families?
It's just a matter of us looking at what classrooms we have. We already have, Dr. Savigny is already working on Class A pre-K programming, and it's just a matter of us allotting the teacher, the teacher's assistant, and finding the space for them. And if it's our priority to do it, it will get done. It was their priority to increase academic achievement, and it's happening. So, if we ask to have it done, and we make it a priority, it will get done. And if we don't increase average daily membership, we are going to continue to see those numbers go down. And I know that we're working with open campus to bring back some of our dropout students, but really, that is important. But what's really important is to bring new life into the system.
I'm not trying to hold up the process that you're trying to move along. Again, I just want to reserve the right for something to come out. We're going to have some important conversations in the next two or three months. So, I think recommitting to things, I'm in favor of. Committing to new things, I'm in favor of. And I want to reserve the right for us to discover some things over the next couple of months.
And I would say that, I don't think we ever seal the deal to the degree that, whatever goals we agree upon, that we can't add anymore as we move through the year. Obviously, especially as we do the master planning for the milestones, what have you. So, that's not a problem at all. And, you know, Superintendent has submitted to us in this document, those things that he identified as important for this year, and this will be measurable for this year, correct? I know there are a couple of target areas to be determined, and how soon will we look at determining those targets?
Well, we're currently working with staff to determine those. You know, I don't want to speak out of turn, because Dr. Savigny is not here who's managing that process. So, we have some deadlines around the middle of September, and then we have some other deadlines that are towards the end of the term.
Okay. And I was speaking mainly for, of course, you know, for the...
For those TBDs.
Yes, yes.
My final comment. I thoroughly understand and support what Dr. Gabriel has said, and I see that's at the kind of germ stage of our conversation on that. And I really think that that may emerge as something. I just don't want to omit anything right now. But as far as recommitting to what Dr. King wants to commit to, I'm certainly in favor of that.
Okay, okay.
When you began this discussion, was it your purpose to try to convince goals or tease out more important goals? I mean, I'm trying to understand what you were trying to get at here.
Yeah. So, I mentioned that we would normally have kind of big rock goals, you know, normally no more than eight, or one big rock associated with each of the priorities. I'm not saying that that's the way we have to do it this year. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done. I think we do need to agree on whatever we're going to use to measure, one, our progress this year, and what we're going to use to evaluate the work of the superintendent. And so, if it's these twenty-three goals, or, but I think we need to be really clear, though. And we're already in August. So, at some point in the fall, I think it is important that we clarify, if we don't accomplish anything else this year, these are the things we're going to keep our eye on, you know? These will be the gauges. Obviously, we have a huge strategic plan, and, you know, a number of things we want to accomplish, but I think there always ought to be some major areas of focus, that even as we communicate with our stakeholders, here are the things we're keeping our eyes on this year. And we believe if these things happen, then this rising tide will raise all those other boats. I don't know if I answered your question.
I particularly like this document, because it captures the priorities, and it puts the goals around the priorities. And I just don't know which of these priorities would we diminish. I think this is a great document, and what the visitor's doing is actually what we asked them to do around these priorities. And so, I just don't see backing away from these plans that they have here, so...
Yes. Okay. So, the board has endorsed the seven priorities, again, as extremely important. And in addition, I know that you're going to have further conversation around a few other things. I think, like, some things that I've heard, like CTE, you know, some other things that are important. But if you use, I'm assuming that that's one example. Let's just assume it is. All right. If CTE is one of those examples, then it already fits with in these seven priorities, because there's a priority that centers on the capital piece, as well as technology. And so, if CTE then becomes an item of interest, then it's plugged into that priority. So, if there are, so, I guess, long story short, what I am, I think I hear you saying that might help, would be maintain the seven priorities. Then, in addition to the things we know we need to do as we move the strategic plan forward, they're all linked to these seven priorities. The board then determines, along each of the seven, what are the one or two indicators of interest to you, not limited to those, but number one and number two, X things, or X amount of growth in terms of percentage of students meeting and achieving standards across subject areas, for example. And then, if you move to the next one, or you move to Board of Distinction, what are certain items of interest, huge items of interest for those? Maybe that will help, because if you keep those linked to those seven priorities, I have not heard a single individual board member mention a thing that's not linked to one of those seven. Right, right. And so, let me be clear. I'm not speaking critically about this document. And when I mention what our approach has been over the last few years, I'm not saying that's the only way to do this business, or to do this work, you know? So, having received this, what's your pleasure? What are your recommendations? But at some point, we do have to adopt a plan for this year. Do we want to make sure that we add some budget goals to this, that the board particularly make sure that we accomplish? What's the board's pleasure?
So, I have, as Dr. King just mentioned, I have written down, we have our seven priorities. We have the strategic plan. We have the work plans and the goals. And then, from, is it just these three items, we're trying to pull out something that we want to make sure that we monitor and set for the board to make sure that we accomplish?
Right. So, I think we may be confusing two things, and that may be a fault here. Two things that we've asked for. One thing we ask, and this is exactly what this is, is that with the strategic plan, year two, phase one, what are those highly important, I say now, I was honored for, things that we really need to focus on from year two, phase one? I think this is what we have here. The other language that we've used coming into the summer, what are those major goals, seven, eight goals, or goals, one goal related to each of the seven priorities, by which we would evaluate the work of the superintendent and monitor our progress as a governance leadership team? And I think that's where we may be getting confused. Now, could this serve as both? Perhaps, that's what we wanted to do, and some of the things we want to add to it, as a board, to make sure, again, that we keep our eye on these things and make progress in these areas, in addition to what the superintendent has provided us with? Certainly, we could do that, to simplify it, and not have, you know...
Layers of goals.
Exactly, exactly. And so, we could very well say, here's some other things that we want to make sure we keep our eye on, and some other things we want to make sure we accomplish, and are moved forward this year. And add those items to this work plan, and it becomes our work plan for the year. If that makes sense. That's not too...
Well, I guess as I was...
Am I confusing you more or more?
No, no. I mean, you know, it's, we kind of have this discussion every year about this time. So, I guess when I look at this document, I tend to see it as a superintendent administration means work plan. And so, when I read what is under the goals column, are really efforts, tasks, priorities, that the administration is saying to the board, these are the things that we're going to give focus. This is how we think it ties back to the strategic plan, and this is how we intend to measure it, and so forth. So, I see that kind of different than board goals. So, a board goal may be that the board is going to continue our efforts towards training and development, what the board can do to advance academic achievement for all students. Or, you know, perhaps around the whole academic review and the essential actions, that there are some goals that we can establish to try to make sure that we're providing appropriate support and monitoring to make sure that we accomplish those things. I kind of see that in the board goals area, along with the big rocks that Dr. Stewart and Dr. Gabriel are working under. So, I'm comfortable with this plan, given an opportunity to just go back and look at some of the measures and targets. What I would just ask is, if we are going to have this plan as an administrative tool, then we have our work sessions, whether it's quarterly or on some periodic basis, that we receive progress reports against this plan. So, I think what tends to happen is, we have a work plan, we have a strategic plan, we have board goals, and then we get reports on a whole lot of different areas, and it's hard to just simply track how we're progressing. So, we've received some SOL data, we've received this. I think initially, we had talked about in September, maybe coming back and trying to look at if there's any adjustments that we are, that we want to do at the strategic plan level. But I would think that any other goals that we may add at a board or a district level would kind of come out of the master planning piece. You know, I just came back from reporting to the V S B A, and one of the things that we were recommending for school boards is like doing an equity audit, and kind of looking at that equity audit, and then how does that play into some of these work plans? So, I kind of see our goals at that level, and these more as, you know, Dr. King and the administration telling us what their intent is to continue to advance the things that we say we want to advance.
Okay.
I'm a big fan of Occam's razor. And Occam's razor, have you ever heard that? It goes, divide things down into the smallest, simplest entity. The more plans we have, the more sets of goals we have, the more complicated the process is. I like this process that Dr. King and his staff has set up, and this is something that we can have reports to on a regular basis, which I think is absolutely critical to help keep the administration on task. Let's keep it as simple as possible. If we have to explain what types of goals, then it's too complicated. So, I would recommend that we try to simplify the process as much as possible.
In the most complimentary manner, I must say, a member of the state of Virginia has implemented a required requirement for superintendent's evaluation. And again, in the most complimentary manner, in their wisdom, we're going to have one hundred and thirty-four school divisions working with that. So, we also have some guidance that's been given to us with great gratitude. So, we've got a lot of things to, that Dr. King must say he's doing so well on. And I have a prediction. I predict that our performance in all measures related to accreditation and the standards of learning will continue to get better, because first year, Dr. King identified the situation, laid plans the second year. This is really a third year of where we're beginning to apply. We had a great deal of professional development, Dr. Bailey, a great deal this summer, a great deal of professional development. I'm predicting that professional development will manifest with obvious progress at this time next year and beyond. That's just a prediction. That's just a prediction.
Okay, thank you. So what I'm hearing, we will certainly, uh, embrace, uh, what we've received. This is the focus for the strategic plan for this year. There is a focus, and, uh, we will receive the, uh, uh, targets, um, at some point, uh, next month. And as we continue our discussions, uh, work session on the tenth, uh, moving forward, we will identify those other board goals. And there is no, uh, expiration date, or when we, you know, that's, that's, that's continuous improvement, ongoing process of our work. Okay? Um, any other questions or comments at all on the SOL report, or results, or the goals that we received? Okay? Alright, very well. We'll move on to our next item of business. Uh, item one, uh, point oh four, uh, open campus update. Dr. King?
Chairman Houston, members of the board. One point zero four, open campus update. I'd like to ask, uh, Dr. Simmons to come forward, as well as Mr. Coleman. And, uh, I'll make some opening comments as they come forward. Of course, this is, this is something that, uh, we've, we've talked about for quite a while in terms of a need in our organization. Um, I, I, I think, I think the discussion, the initial discussion was it, was, should, should serve as a perfect segue into this piece. Um, because the whole notion has been around a, a three-pronged approach for us and our needs. One being to, uh, address, begin to address the overage for grade, uh, concern and challenge that we have at middle school, uh, so that we can get children back on track, and to, to get them to a point where they can graduate on time. And also, begin to link them with a career so that they can be employable. Uh, secondly, also begin to, uh, ramp up the whole notion of, uh, continuing to increase the graduation rate. Uh, we see that in the aggregate, we, we experienced some increases this, this previous year. And so, that's a positive, but we know that there is a lot left to be done, and many students on our high school grounds now that are behind to the point that mathematically is very difficult for them to get back on track without a non-traditional approach. Thirdly, uh, the whole notion of dropout. We know that we have to continuously do the work in a proactive manner to, uh, see our dropout rate, uh, decrease. So, um, we started with, uh, a certain model that we presented to the board. Um, during transformation discussions, the board took action on transformation and endorsed the transformation model. Uh, however, funding, uh, as it is across the, our nation, has been a challenge, and we didn't get, uh, that whole, that model funded. Uh, so we continued to, uh, have discussions amongst the committee to, to determine how could we modify the modules so that we could begin the work, but, but continue, continue with the work in a way that we're increasing our capacity to bring more and more students into those three areas. So, with that said, to this evening, this afternoon, we'd like to, uh, present to the board where we are, um, the committee, and I'd like to, uh, uh, applaud Dr. Simmons and, uh, Mr. Coleman for work that they've been doing, uh, throughout. And, uh, especially here with, uh, Mr. Coleman coming on most recently with the, with the programmatic piece for high school, and Dr. Simmons being involved as a facilitator from the start, putting the committees together as, uh, we requested. Uh, great work there. And we have now a modified model that does not address, uh, on day one, the total number of students that we had anticipated initially. Uh, if you wanna find the negative, we can pinpoint that. However, the positive is that it is allowing us to, uh, address, um, a number of students that we were not, uh, poised and prepared to address in the past. So you'll see that we are, we're looking at about one hundred twenty-five students, uh, from the beginning and being, and wanting to grow it from that point. Uh, with that said, I'll defer to Dr. Simmons and ask her to walk the board through the process. And we will be asking the board to, uh, respectfully, uh, take action that would allow us to execute the, uh, contract so that we can move forward, uh, with the model and, uh, tenets that you're gonna hear.
Meaning the board vote is requested tonight?
We would like to, we would like to ask for that, yes.
Thank you, Dr. King. Dr. King, Dr. Houston, and members of the board, it's my pleasure to discuss this version of the open campus we have this evening. I'd like to introduce our special guest first. Before we move forward, um, I would like to have, you know that Jim Dyke, former Secretary of Education, is in the room with us to answer questions at the end of this presentation. Along with, would you please introduce yourself and where you're from?
Sure, Jamal Brown. I am with Edison, Magic Johnson, Bridgegate Academy School, Ohio.
Ohio, for the state of Ohio?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm Mike Williams, that is the learning, I'm the Chief Information Officer at Fresno.
Thank you. So the proper name of this school will be Norfolk Public Schools Open Campus, a Magic Johnson Bridgegate Academy. None of the program overview and mission has changed from what we presented to you before. Uh, this school is still designed for the same population of students, just a different number. Every student will receive individualized instruction, as we had mentioned before, and, uh, they will have a graduation plan so that we can help them successfully matriculate from where they are through, at the reception of a diploma. On this particular slide, on the left side, is the very same information we gave you before. And this whole presentation is an attempt to remind you where we were and tell you where we are today. So on the left, none of that information has changed. We did an R F P, we selected this company to partner with us for this open campus. But this new strategy, we had to make some adjustments, because we did not have the funding that we anticipated in the very beginning. And the new, the model that Magic Johnson Bridgegate practices throughout the nation is focused on dropouts, because that is indeed new funding. So we had to move to this model, because it was the only way that we could generate the funds that we need to get the program started. So that's why we are working with a larger population of dropout students and fewer overage for grade and, uh, behind on credits. This is the team that will staff the school. A partner, Magic Johnson Bridgegate, will provide us with a director, an enrollment coordinator that will work with the kids from the moment they are identified straight through graduation. There will be an office business manager that they will provide, they will provide a security officer for the building. And we will join hands in a collaborative effort for professional development. There is a model or methodology that they replicate for all of their centers, so our staff will participate in that. But we will invite them to engage in our training too. We have synergy, a new student information system, so we will be using synergy in collaboration with their management system to drive what we do with our program efforts. Norfolk Public Schools, and we've been working very closely with everyone, every part of the organization in Norfolk, all departments. Personnel will help us identify four highly qualified, excellent teachers for this school. It takes a special breed to work with these students. One special education teacher, one guidance counselor, one custodian. And we will have food provided by school food services, a breakfast and a lunch for students every day. I'd like to mention too, that we will appoint an open campus advisory board that will be comprised of Norfolk Public School representatives, Magic Johnson Bridgegate representatives, and community stakeholders that will have a vested interest in seeing the success of this program from start to finish.
Who chooses the advisory board?
We can talk about that.
I'm a brass in terms of the board.
Kirk, you don't have enough to do.
So, um, and I'm looking forward to that board being appointed, and, and we will collaborate with the board as we select the members. So, our previous target population was eighty-six students who had dropped out, and eighty-two middle school students that were overage for grade, and eighty-two high school students that were five or more credits behind. We still have many, many students in those categories. The new model, because of the changes that we've had to make to structure the pricing, we will have one hundred students that are classified as dropout. And we just, um, ran that list again to make sure we have the most recent students that are in this category. We have spent a lot of time with graduation coaches identifying who they think would be the best children to return and, and be successful in this program. So we've al- already identified most of them, just a few more to identify once, uh, we get approval. Um, there will be twenty middle school students who are overage for grade by at least two years that will participate in this program, and five high school students that are five or more credits behind. The total number of students will be one hundred and twenty-five. And we, um, by, by selecting one hundred students to enroll in this program, the company is giving us twenty-five slots, I should say, for free. And that's where the additional twenty-five come in. You should know that our philosophy and our approach is still unchanged. Uh, small class size credit recovery ratio of one to twenty-five max, uh, with how we work with our students, re-engaging them in instruction. And we're focusing on building their proficiency through a web-based, Virginia-approved curriculum. Again, this is just a restatement of our target population. Yes, uh, Dr. King makes a very, uh, important point. We are, we will be looking at growing this population, so we are starting with one hundred and twenty-five. But the capacity for growth is enormous, and we still will not have touched the lives of every child that we need to touch. Uh, the building that we have in mind will house many, many more students, at least over a thousand students we can serve at one time, max. The school food services, I mentioned before, will be provided breakfast and lunch. You notice there is a session one, from seven thirty until eleven thirty, and session two will start at noon and run until four. Session three was in the other model. It will be, we will be doing a session three, but it's gonna take a little bit of time to build that session. But we're gonna start out of the gate with sessions one and two. Uh, transportation will be provided for the twenty students that are in middle school, um, by Bob Klein Bell, our transportation department. Um, the other students, we intend to use tokens. Um, Hampton Roads transit tokens to get them from home to school and back.
We have been conversations with them to provide, uh, H R T could help defray some of the costs?
Uh, yes, we are. Uh, once the board approves, uh, this contract, that conversation will begin. I, I should remind you that, uh, the Commission for the Reduction of Parity, the president of, of that particular company sits on the board with us, and they did vote for this to be successful. And I am certain that they will partner with us to help that happen. So, we had to come up with an estimate of what we think is the gear-up time. Uh, we're gonna have to get really busy out the gate, uh, starting tomorrow, if you will allow us to do that. We hope to have a signature on August twenty. August twenty-one, we will begin building grounds preparation. There's not a whole lot to do, because the building is in really, really good shape. But we're gonna have to get it ready for technology and infrastructure, and they actually started looking at that on yesterday. On August twenty-first, we will announce for our highly qualified teaching positions, it will be advertised. And, uh, we are very optimistic that, uh, the H R department can help us identify and lock down our teaching staff by August twenty-eight. On September second, we will have identified all students. We have the roster all ready, it's just a matter of finding an additional forty, uh, that can participate. We'll be working hard to have that completed by September second. There is professional development that the staff will have to go through, and that will occur between September eleven and September twenty-four. We will have two days, possibly three, on a Saturday, but this is a Friday and a Monday of orientation for our students. And the first day of class will be September twenty-nine. The rationale supporting that is that you have to have students in a seat on September twenty-nine in order to generate the S O Q funding that will help us pay for this program this fiscal year. There will be a wonderful ribbon-cutting ceremony, and that time will be announced. It is preferable that that occur probably in October, once we have children in the seats, teachers, and so the media can have a conversation with the children and teachers to get a real picture of what, uh, what we're doing. It's important to us, to everybody that is engaged in this whole process, to Dr. King, that we report a minimum of four times a year, a good degree of change, the degree of impact that this program is indeed having on our students. There are multiple indices of measure that we will look at, and we will work closely with our research and evaluation and assessment and accountability department to determine those factors. But among those are whether or not our kids actually receive a diploma as they projected with the graduation plan. Whether or not they are ready for life beyond high school. And part of this will engage our counselors in helping them find employment while they're working, or employment or, or college and career, or some university or tech school, um, career certifications while they are in school. We wanna communicate those results to you for every one of those one hundred and twenty-five students. The degree to which this blended learning model is really working, there's lots of computer technology. Achieve three thousand is inherent to what they offer. So we will have a Lexile score for every student. We will know, uh, because of Achieve three thousand, the degree to which these kids are college and career-ready. They have scientific data that's inherent to the system that will communicate that. I didn't do that. Janelle did that. And, um, and, and, uh, there is a math program that has databases inherent to the system that can scientifically, uh, can, we can allow us to convey to you the degree to which kids are meeting their math and reading and writing proficiency. Um, and, uh, the graduation plan, we will be providing data back to you, which will let you know how they are matriculating through their graduation plan, and each one is customized and, and individualized. There are diagnostic assessments that are on hand, but these children will also be taking the Virginia Standards of Learning Assessment. And this testing will occur in a very secure environment, in close collaboration with our testing and assessment department. And we will tell you the degree to which, uh, the Magic Johnson Bridgegate organization is indeed recruiting to fill seats, once we have a student that leaves successfully. We intend to keep every child that comes to us in this, we believe will be a very successful model. John?
You've covered it all. I think we're at a point where, you know, we, we honestly need an, an answer today to be able to follow through with this. Uh, I, I would call it an aggressive plan to be able to be ready to start on the twenty-ninth. However, I do believe it's a realistic plan, that, you know, if we can get started right now, we can make it happen.
And I would remind the board that, uh, just as, uh, Dr. Simmons alluded to, this is, this is, um, tightly aligned with SOL state requirements. Um, same accountability level, no changes there. These students are expected to, uh, reach, meet, see, exceed, et cetera, at the same levels of expectations across the board. So none of that changes, but it's just a, a great opportunity to, to, to open the door to, to begin, well, to, to begin to open the door for these students so that we can get them back on track. And in some cases, uh, based on my experience, s- sometimes children choose to, once they're back on track, return to their home school, uh, as we grow that population of overage for grade and those that are behind on the, uh, high school campuses. But in many cases, children decide that this is where they want to stay and thrive and graduate and move on to the next level. And so that has been the experience. And this is something that is scientifically based, research-based, and we know it works. And so, it's about the fidelity at which we implement that's gonna determine our level of success. And so we're prepared for that, and we're excited that we are, uh, able to partner with Magic Johnson Bridgegate in that regard. And, uh, I'm sure that they may want to offer additional comments.
Any comments for, um, I did see that.
Representatives that we have.
Yes.
Outside of, um, any questions that you all have, um, I serve as the Director of Achievement for the state of Ohio, so I handle schools, um, in Cleveland, Ohio, Columbus, Ohio, and Cincinnati, Ohio. I oversee the management of those schools. Um, and in those situations, we deal with kids who are students who are in this population, um, who are in, right now, we're in legislation now where we're expanding, um, the grade or the age limit for our students. So now we are allowed to serve students twenty-two to twenty-nine. Because there is a huge population of students, as you all know, what the G D D is doing, the cost of it. And so this gives us a wonderful opportunity to really feed back into the district what needs to happen or what can occur with these students, and foster that relationship and foster that, that growth potential from students who have, you know, maybe been, become disenfranchised from just the institution of education period. So partnering is, is gonna be wonderful. I mean, it's, we've grown it quite well in Ohio. Um, our program, we've graduated, um, over five hundred kids, um, out of our programs in a matter of two years. Um, and that's just reclaiming students back in. Um, and actually, we have to really tell students, you have to drop out of school in Ohio before you can come to our program, because they're opting to just to come to our school as opposed to going to, to going to high school. Um, because of the, the day and how it's set up. Um, and if you, you know, of course, the research is out there about, you know, um, the number of hours that a student requires or needs, or what happens in a traditional high school. This gives us an opportunity to have a life and to develop and grow. So, if you have any questions, definitely about the program, please, I'd be willing to, to answer.
Thank you, remember, I wanna jump in on that, because you, you get, you touched on a very important point. Because you talked about the fact that students would have to drop out before they could come into that program. Our model is different. That's what's exciting about our model. While we are recruiting back students that dropped out, we are now building the capacity to be proactive, not to wait for children to drop out. But we have those students that are in middle school that are old. But we have those students that are in middle school, that are overage for grade, that are real good candidates to drop out. So why not give them this opportunity now before they drop out to get them back on track? Secondly, those high school students that are behind on credits to the point that they cannot mathematically get caught up, those are huge candidates for dropout. So why wait for them to drop out and then recruit them back when we can address those needs and from a two-tier standpoint, in addition to what was just stated? So that's what's different about this partnership, in my view, compared to even what you all have done very well in other places. So it would be quite exciting and interesting to watch how this, how this works.
Sure. Okay. I'll give another guest an opportunity.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have anything to add to the, to the, the educational model. As, as the CIO, I'm responsible for ensuring that, that the, all the systems are available to students, et cetera, and had the grand opportunity to meet with your facilities team, et cetera, since I've been here, and get off to a good start. So it's been a, a nice opportunity. Last two, three days, I've met with quite a few folks, and I appreciate the, the partnership and the folks helping us, you know, be ready, should we get the ghost start.
Good. Thanks, you, appreciate you being here today. Yes. Oh, sorry.
My name is Jim Dyke. This is going to be head, Tom Jackson is the CEO of Addison, could not be here because of a scheduled conflict. But as you know, he's been very hands-on. He was with you in January, the first discussion. He's been working closely with Dr. King and his team. And I want to thank Dr. King and his team for doing a great job, working through this process, getting into a program and ready to hit the ground running. I want to thank the board, who I hopefully will be voting to sign the contract today. I think it's, it's going to be a very important program. And listening to your earlier presentation, where you were talking about the progress that was made, I think this is going to also show that this school system is looking at innovative ways to improve and to reach students who perhaps had not been reached in the past. So I think you should be very, you should feel very good about this, and I think it's going to be a great model. This is the first program of this type in Virginia, and I think there are going to be a number of folks who are going to be watching this program and trying to, in essence, go to school on what Norfolk is doing here. So I would, anything that we can do to be helpful, I certainly am offering my availability to help as this program unfolds, as you work with DOE and others. If there's anything that I can do, I'm willing and happy to do that and to, to support this effort. I think it's a great program, and I'm very excited about it, I'm very anxious about it. I'm pleased to be a part of it, so pleased that I drove down here for three hours to participate, and I'm turning around and driving for another three hours to go back to North Virginia, because I wanted to be here, to be a part of what I think is, is a great start, and I want to commend you.
Thank you so much. So much clear. Did you need to say something to the board today? I just couldn't pass that out. Do you have another comment?
I just want to take a moment to thank Jack Cloud for his over-the-weekend, over-the-weekend, the-weekend, the-weekend work to get the contract right in collaboration with Magic Johnson. He's put in extensive time.
Thank you. Okay.
And Dr. Thornton for finance, he spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we could afford to do this.
Thank you. All right, Warren?
Field of Dreams is one of my most favorite books. So three years from now, three years from now, I expect School of Dreams might be a movie, and I think it will be a wonderful movie. I, I think, I'm endlessly impressed with Secretary Dyke because it was Secretary Dyke that thirty years ago had the dream to focus on dropouts in the state of Virginia, and that you're still dreaming, and hopefully we can help it come true. I have questions, but the questions aren't in form of concerns, they're just questions over the one slide with NPS, FTEs, and, and personnel assignments. Again, I believe that three years from now, we are going to have increasing numbers. Since Dr. King and myself and our governance team is involved with many student support hearings, I kept asking, could we do this, could we do this? I could see that it's evolving. But the, the initial expenditures of four classroom teachers, one special ed teachers, is the custodian full-time, is the, you know, this is initial expenditures, these are questions, not concerns, these are questions. It's a pretty large expenditure for a dream. You did say, you, you mentioned that you needed to find forty more. Let's predict that it's December or January. Remember, three years from now, we're doing a movie about School of Dreams. Okay? So, so this is, these are questions. But three months from now, it could be that the numbers aren't there yet, or they're still arriving, or, or that all of the possibilities haven't emerged. This is a pretty big expenditure. I just want you to give me some comfort with four FTEs, one special ed, full-time counselor, all, all of that. Help, help me with that, because if for some reason the number of students don't justify that number of, that large personnel cost initially, do we have some contingency for that? Again, these are questions, not concerns.
Can I just piggyback on that? Are you all going to go through, does this preliminary budget that's on board docs along with the, the new model?
Yes.
Are, are you all going to go through that as part of that discussion?
Basically, that's, that's where I'm heading, and I'm starting with people first. But again, these are not concerns, these are just questions.
So we are prepared, we were prepared to start a while back with two-hundred-and-fifty students we had identified. We're only going to be serving one-hundred-and-twenty-five. So I can, yes, to begin with, so I can say with a high degree of certainty, we have the population to be in the seats. And in keeping with that, my mind goes to two students at, at Ruffner. One student that, that is so ready to go, they straightened their act up, and they decided they were going to get on track because we're not going to have behavior problems. One student would be the first graduate of, from a high school from his family. He's one. The other student has a mother and a father that are incarcerated, they're in prison, and he's kind of living on his own. These are two kids that really will be successful, and I can just go on and on, but we can, we can fill the seats, we will fill the seats.
Just want to have flexibility and a contingency that if in the first three months, we're still, we have a large budget placed out there for it, we have a lot of people out there for it, I just want those folks to be used the best. Again, not at the level of concern, just at the level of question.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to point out, so you've already identified the teacher staff who will be.
Not yet.
Okay, so, but you're pretty confident that you'll be able to, to about twenty-eight, find five teachers?
Yes, we have more than five that have already expressed interest in coming to work in, in the program, so.
And, and so these teachers, are they coming from, they're coming from our division?
That decision has not been made yet. It's possible that they could come from outside, but we will advertise, recruit, and move very quickly to secure positions.
Which means that that won't take from the current school status because we're posting and hiring in that way. They work very diligently with human resources and Dr. Thornton from finance to take a look at allotments, to look at what we have, to ensure that we didn't disrupt programs by pulling X number of teachers from one campus to apply to this campus so that it negatively impacts the other. So in many cases, we're posting positions, and you all know how many positions are being posted, to secure this, and I think we secure it maybe two and a half allotments or something like that. You, you want, want to speak to that?
We, in terms of finding the positions to be able to advertise for, we have two and a half positions that have come from our, well, two positions that have come from our middle schools, a half a position that has come from one of our high schools, and then the other two and a half would be, you know, part of the new funding that would be in the model. That would take care of the, the classroom positions. The counselor piece is something that we can already absorb within our current allotment within our schools.
And then if I may, let's just ask the obvious question. So clearly you've found the money in the budget to do this.
Right.
So can you explain a little bit how that came to bear?
I will defer to Dr. Thornton, who prepared the budget, and he did a comparison of the original versus the current.
All right. First of all, the idea is that with the, the one-hundred students or future NPS students that will occupy the field, School of Dreams that I'm still talking about, those one-hundred students would conceivably qualify as part of our ADM that currently is not in our ADM, our Average Daily Membership, for state funding purposes. So that would, assuming that those kids were qualified throughout the school year, we would maintain that one-hundred or so kids throughout the school year.
Let me draw the report.
That we would maintain those one-hundred students throughout the school year to qualify in our Average Daily Membership for state funding purposes, we would assume that if, if that be the case, that we receive approximately four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in additional state revenue to support those one-hundred kids coming back into the division as new members of our student enrollment or Average Daily Membership. So that would be an additional revenue source to fund some of the costs associated. Of course, that would leave approximately two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand dollars or so that we would need to absorb within our operating budget. You'll recall that two weeks ago, when we shared with the board some proposed, recommended adjustments to the budget, it included a net increase in overall revenue of approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars. So we would propose that the two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-dollar difference be funded with the two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar that we shared with the board as additional funding that had yet to be identified for a specific program or need. So that would leave a differential of about eighteen-thousand dollars, and then the fundamental question is, can we identify eighteen-thousand dollars in our three-hundred-and-twenty-million-dollar budget? Yes, we will, without taking it away from an existing program. And you may say, well, how do we do that because the budget was so tight? Well, invariably, we will have some turnover savings as we begin the year, we will have some attrition savings as we begin the year. So the short answer is that two-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand-dollar net difference or additional funding that is required, two-hundred-and-thirty of it has already been identified and shared with the board as, as additional funding, and then the other eighteen-thousand dollars we will identify as we go forward. Now, what this will require is, you've seen two iterations of our necessary budget adjustment, but in order to capture this additional state funding, we'll need to have a third iteration that we will present to the board and ask the council to include in its final amendment, which I believe will be sometime in September. It will not require additional funding from the council, but it will require that the council provide us the additional appropriation, authorization to expend these monies.
Other questions?
Can you just clarify the staffing piece for me again? So in this operating budget that's on the screen, it shows one-point-five FTE for staffing expenses. In the, on the slide, it mentioned the six, and Mr. Coleman, you were just mentioning something about a two-point-five. Oh.
I said two and a half and two and a half, and I should have said two and a half and one for the four positions, because the, one of the positions is a special education position, which will come from six-B money, which will cover that position. And then the coun, the counselor position will come from what we're going to absorb within our current allotment within the, the district.
Two and a half.
So two and a half.
Is what we already have allocated, funded for. Is that right?
One and a half comes from the allocated funding, and two and a half comes from identified positions from the schools.
So of, of the total four regular ed positions that we, that we have identified for the program, two and a half are already included in our currently-approved budget for staffing and associated costs. Because we were not able to identify the additional one and a half, we will now say that will have to be a new cost. So that's why we show one and a half in the dollar budget value or budget impact on this particular slide. Yes.
Are you saying that we have the two and a half teacher position is already allotted for in our budget?
Correct.
Or do we already have that position within our teaching staff in order to go over to that program?
The, the two and a half currently exists in our budget as currently-approved, fully-funded, and now they've identified, been identified that instead of being allocated to a particular location, it can now be moved over to the open campus without us incurring an additional cost. So we don't have to go out and, and fund two and a half more positions. They're already in our total allocation, they're ness, they're, they're going to be assigned or reassigned to this particular program.
That's correct, and there's no, currently, there's nobody in those positions, so that's why they're free now.
Okay.
Whereas we didn't have the other one and a half available to reallocate.
So that would be a new hire, that would be what Dr. Birdsong would be advertising.
New funding, new hire, yes.
And that would not negatively impact our student-to-teacher ratios in our other programs because we did have a reduction in that with the budget that we recently approved?
Mr. Coleman and the other executive directors have worked closely with principals to determine the impact.
Right. The budget reduction piece has already gone through, and so we've, we've, we've done budget reductions to get to that line that the board set in terms of the pupil-student relation. So we're still at seventeen to one for middle schools, twenty-one to one for the high schools. These two and a half positions will not impact those numbers.
And they're not coming from classrooms that we need the extra help with, for example, algebra or areas of focus that, like for the, for the SOLs?
They are not.
Okay. Good.
Yes, just Warren?
Dr. King, two months ago, I asked you this, and I, I, I think I'm going to now take this as a clairvoyant yes from you. I asked you, was there any reduction in the specialty programs at high school that was coming about that the money that we thought we would get that was extra could be focused on? And you said, we're clear.
Right.
This is the specialty high school program, Field School of Dreams, and so now this becomes a focus on that. I am not surprised that the, the good news that you all gave us the last meeting about the additional funds ends up here. And again, three years from now, I look forward to looking back and saying this is really extraordinary, but in a sense, this is a clairvoyant answer of saying, yes, this is a specialty program.
Yes.
And this is a very special program.
I mean, I, just a quick comment on that. I mean, we've identified, the team has identified caseloads across all three areas. If you take a look at the dropout piece, and you were, you were asking questions about, you know, well, what happens if we are not at one-hundred, or we don't get to that point? I'd be very surprised if that happens to us, because when we, that caseload is in excess of five-hundred right now, in terms of actual bodies where we're making contact. So, and we have a partnership between our school system and Magic Johnson Bridgecape to be able to communicate with those families and students to, to attract them back. So we feel real good about that, and that has begun, and some folk have committed and that kind of thing. So we feel we're strong about where we are with that. As a matter of fact, we really would like to begin that whole process, we're using the figure one-hundred, but we want to go beyond that, because when you do that, you know, you're increasing in a lot of areas for children as well as the supporting, the funding as well, so.
Because people are going to be hearing about this, maybe for the first time are paying attention, could you just speak to the location again? I know, we know where it is, but there could be a lot of folks that won't, could be an awful lot more excited once they hear about this location.
It's on East Little Creek.
Right across from Roosevelt Chapel.
Right, right. The Calvary Revival K eight school. So it's.
Beautiful school.
Beautiful school, beautiful building, yes.
Yes.
I would suggest as a board that we take a proactive vote now, that we not do this under consent. I think this is a significant enough vote that we should do this now versus consent.
Okay. And other questions or comments? Yes.
One last question. I know that we had talked about grant funding, and I don't see a space for grant funding on the budget, and I know that you're working on the grant funding, but when you come and do our quarterly updates on open campus, if you could just let us know where we're at with the grant funding, because hopefully we'll, with the success of the program, it'll bring in some good publicity and maybe some donations.
It will, and I will add to that, that Opportunity Inc. was going to give us a grant, but they can't until we have an approved school and it's up and running. So that's going to be our first stop.
One other, kind of related to that, for the, it is the learning Magic Johnson, so we, we've talked about identifying students, and then there's the process of going from identification to recruitment to enrollment. What's your typical experience from that, that time period for identification to recruitment and enrollment? And then are there any other incentives that are involved with the program, that students receive a stipend, is anything like that that's involved with keeping them engaged once? Is anything like that that's involved with keeping them engaged once, once they're enrolled by September twenty-ninth? Other factors, you know, childcare, employment, other things, though, come into play and cause them to drop out before they complete the program?
Definitely. With DOPR students or drop out prevention and recovery students, they are statistically seventy-five percent more likely to drop out again than your average student who is attending school. So the energy and efforts that we put in retaining students and building relationships with them, so when you talk about how you staff the facility, it's very important that you have individuals who understand the mindset, understand the demographic, understand the socioeconomics of each of our students, because poverty looks different, you know? And I think you all understand as practitioners, you understand that it looks different in Ohio than it does in Louisiana than it does in Texas. And so it looks very different. So how we approach it is we look at our enrollment managers or the person who's doing the enrollment for the city. That person is really in tune and connected into the communities that these students are coming from. So they're building a rapport and they're building a sustainable relationship with them so that we don't have those higher occurrences at our schools. It's important also to know that internally to Magic Johnson, we do bring in opportunities for internships, those kind of things on a national level. Two of our kids actually in Ohio received scholarships to go to school. And so it's very competitive, but it pushes students to a place where it's not just a mediocre, I'm just in school, I'm taking these courses online, and that's okay and that's enough. We're looking at PSEO, we're looking at opportunities for our students, and we're building those kind of things. And we're also using staff to actually go out and, and look for those externships and internships and things that are going to keep them there. So it's part of all of, of the MJBA embrace, if you will.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I've started telecommunications schools that kind of targets that population, and was on the OpEx Youth Council for years, and the biggest challenge was always out of school youth. And so that's why I was just trying to get a sense of what the timeframe that you have, and especially with the budget being tied to having those students there and then being able to sustain, if there was just...
We're very aggressive. I, you know, I, I can't even describe it in any other way. We are very, very aggressive when it comes to getting kids back and re-engaging them. Not to the point where they're like, oh, my God, get away from me, stop calling my house, please don't stop by. But we do get them into a place where they understand and trust what we, what we have for them. And when you lay it out for them, there's an understanding that they get. They, they actually receive that, oh, you actually care about, which is the motto and pedagogy that we all practice, that we want to make sure that students can trust, that the facility is safe, that the environment is safe, that my teachers care about me, that my principal understands, may not have to live it, but understands where I'm coming from. And in the instance where I have two kids with no support, that you understand that I'm going to have to find a different plan in order to make this thing happen for myself. So all of those variables, and, and the economists in the room will understand this, the externalities that come with this demographic, we truly address upfront.
This is a request, Dr. Lanz, are you ready? You know what I'm going to say, Ms. Mather. It is a strong request that longitudinal research be done the very first day, if not beginning today, on this, that gathering of evaluative data such as students telling their stories, such as being asked, why are you entering this? Why are you doing this? And then hopefully two or three years can say, did, didn't work out. And ten years from now, when they come back and say, this went well, this is what Dr. Lanz is doing so well, the testimony, and this is what Ms. Mather can do so well with publicity, this could begin a great story. And gathering data will help with the grants. And the only difficulty is grants can never pay for people. Can't do personnel costs, so, but gathering the data, beginning today even, even through video, about what do you hope will happen and what do you think will happen, could, could pay off in, in grant applications in the future.
Thank you. I just have one other question about the advisory council, what role do they play?
The advisory council purpose is to, well, it has multifaceted purpose, but one major purpose is to, for the transparency and awareness of the program. Because once you engage the parent, the business leader, the faith-based entity, a cross-section of stakeholders that will come together routinely to hear reports, just, just like the board does in many cases around, here, we have X number of students, here are examples of progress made, what are the indicators of progress, so that they know, and then they're able to go out and communicate widely and outside about what's happening. And then that becomes information that we package, and then the team brings to the board as a report. So it's, 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 it's much like a transparency model and involvement from the outside end. And in many cases, ends up in additional support for the school. And that's important, so that model.
Okay. Well, last fall or summer, we embraced the open campus model as a part of the transformation initiative. And so today, I would ask for a motion, two parts, that we would authorize the administration to sign the contract that would enable the division to start an open campus in September, and that the administration also be authorized to make the adjustment to the NPS budget to accommodate the staffing model as proposed.
So Root?
Second.
Is there any more discussion? Properly moving and seconded, Ms. Banks?
Thank you. Dr. Heesey?
Aye.
Mrs. Doyle?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Reverend Haywood?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
I'm supportive. I just, on the, on the piece where we're looking at the student enrollment, I would just ask that you all get special attention to that with, with the contract and somehow soon after, in, in October, if we find ourselves struggling in that, in that regard, that you all just let us know so if there's anything we need to do to make sure that there's going to be success there. So, aye, yes.
Dr. Robinson?
Aye.
Dr. Stiller?
Amen to Reverend Jordan. And I.
Is that everybody?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I missed somebody there. Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And we certainly commend Dr. Simmons on her continued effort and, and passion for this and all who worked along with her, and we look forward to the success of this program. Okay? And we thank our guests as well for coming. Yes, sir.
I mean, thanks for doing this, but also to Warren's comment. I have a daughter who's in Los Angeles, who's in Applebee's, who had a role in twelve years of slave, and I'm hopeful it'll be a role for her in the school.
It was together.
Oh, you put them together?
Yes, yes. Okay. Continuing on, and we are, we are on, on schedule here, one point oh five, Board Matters. Are there any committee reports?
Couple.
Okay, Warren?
Number one, libraries. Went to the library board meeting yesterday. They are doing extraordinary things to support in Saturday programs and in summer programs. Nearly fourteen thousand students were served by the library. I look at Dr. Gabriel as I say this, I got a listing of, of the library early childhood initiatives. They are doing outstanding things with parents of infants and, and whatever. And so, Dr. Gabriel, if you don't mind, I'm just going to pass this through, Mr. Jordan, to you. The library is helping us a lot. Can I do something on the legislative piece, too?
Yes.
I've, I had my visitation with...
Visitation?
Yeah. Yeah, that's true. Slip up with Senator Lewis and Delegate Bloxham. Both of them have completed the forms, had a nice conversation by phone today with Delegate Bloxham, because he went back and had to ask a lot of questions because he knew. I know we have newly elected folks, and if there's any, I think you said that you knew the newly elected...
Sure, I'll be happy to meet with him.
Could, could each of us plan on visiting our representative? I know that Dr. Gabriel has made contact with our lieutenant governor. But again, to ask them these questions and allow them an opportunity to, to respond to them, but also to ask them if there's an issue that they want us to be aware of, and just to keep the channels of communication. There is no election this year, but next year there will be one. And so continuing that conversation and continue those channel of communication on the legislative piece. And finally, I know that Dr. King had asked Dr. Simmons to work on vastly improved legislative day on the nineteenth. There could be some more exciting news on that. And then...
Nineteenth or what?
It's actually the eighteenth. Tuesday.
It's been changed to...
Is that the legislative breakfast that we're talking about?
Legislative breakfast, but...
So Warren, as a part of our preparation for that day, the number of items on the, on the list, of course, that have been on, been on the...
Actually, these are all recycled items. There's nothing new. Something may come up after, come, soon to come, twenty-third or fourth meeting, there could be something hot coming up.
So, so actions from the former years on those would be helpful as we move toward November. And I'm not trying to tax you with the work that we were paying an individual to do for the last five years. But, but, but the, but the status and action, so the one dealing with J-Lock...
Same question we've been asking them for several years, we just want to ask them again. Remember, though, the real reason is, we're just keeping in touch with our elected officials, and they know we're going to be with them every year when they can listen to us. And Senator Lewis and Delegate Bloxham were unbelievably pleased that we're talking at this time. And one of them has some real interests in some, some future items. I think each one of us have our representatives we visited before, and, and it could be we uncover something. And, and there may be some new alliances people will be forming. And SOLs isn't over yet.
Okay. Thank you. Other committee reports? Thank you, Warren. Agenda plan...
You had put the, the milestones down here, too.
Right, I'm going to connect it to agenda planning.
I got you.
Put these two right together. So the agenda for September tenth has been posted. Any questions or comments? Note that there is an hour designated, no other one, for the master milestone conversation. Okay? Any, any questions at all about the September tenth work session agenda?
Have a couple minutes on that milestone thing?
If we could, before we get there. I don't think it's been posted, I don't think we've shared this with folks.
Okay, I thought...
No, the only thing that's posted, I believe, because we're still in draft on the tenth, is today's. Is it? Were we going to need to modify something, though, on the tenth?
No, we have planned the tenth, that was the...
We're going to have the work session on the tenth.
Yes, we are.
Do we know by then what the focus and priority school status report is at that time? The focus and priority school status report?
Usually it is around the first to the middle of September, so possibly.
Okay.
Okay, I guess I'll be in there.
On the, the climate survey, is that going to include the, the school level survey data? What's, I'm the, well, maybe I'll sit in the way, can it include school level data?
I'll, I'll double check that. I would like to say yes, but I need to double check, because I know that there's people that are working on that. But I think the answer to that is yes, but I'll check.
And just, we are going over committee reports, and then you also have the policy committee, School Board Policy Committee there. We're, we're still, we'll have this done in time for, for the September tenth meeting, but we are still working to make sure that we're in sync from the board's expectations for the policy committee and the administration's internal, internal process. I think Reverend Haywood and I have talked about it and talked about with administrative representatives on the committee, we don't see the policy committee as going through and trying to take a look at every single item that comes down from, from BSBA. We're trying to, based upon recommendations that come from the administration, highlight those areas that may require significant regulations or have significant impact on some of the things that we've talked about. And then there have been items that, in our discussions, have been referred to the policy committee, and our expectation is we would take that back to the committee, work with the administration on a framework, and then come back for board review and eventually, eventually, eventually actions. I just wanted to put that out there if there's any question or concerns or confusion about that.
Yeah, and that's why we had mentioned us getting together, you and I, superintendent, just to kind of...
Okay.
Clarify the role of the policy committee, so, so that we can plan accordingly.
Yeah, because I just, because we've, you know, our schedule that we put together was to try to meet on, is it first Mondays?
First Monday.
And then, of course, in September, that's Labor Day. And then we were talking about moving it back to the eighth, we thought, at least I thought the eighth was too late, because it's only two days before the tenth. So then we were talking about maybe on the twenty-fifth, so just in terms of...
Now the new date.
What, what's the new date?
Friday, August twenty-ninth.
Oh, that's news to me.
I think first segment back.
But we need to be in sync before we go down that path, and that's what I...
So the meeting just needs to take place first with Dr. King, Dr. Houston, Ed, and Rodney, Janelle, and Dr. Birdsong, to make sure everybody's on the same page. Sure, that's fine.
Well, we just have to announce the meeting if we all get together, so...
Well, that's true, too, yeah. So whoever, but the point is, we do need to get together. You're right. In order to determine...
Make sure we're in sync with that before...
Exactly. Right.
So we'll know that now. Hopefully, before we leave the building, we'll get together and match our calendars.
Can I ask a point of clarification for the climate survey results?
Sure.
Portion?
Go ahead.
If we, if the plan is for us to receive the results and the action plan, I really enjoyed hearing the results of the survey that Dr. Birdsong had brought to us. And the discussion that came from that data that she brought to us was, these are the, these are the results, this is what we're going to take back to the administration, the administration is going to then disseminate the information to the staff, and then we're going to come back to the board and let you all know how the, these changes that we've made based upon the results have gone. And I, I'd like to see that in presentation with the climate survey results, if that's possible. So if there are any highlights that have come from that, and then what you all would like to do about those specific highlights, how you're going to bring them back to the staff, and then how you would report back to us to let you know that you're making progress on those topics would be wonderful. Does, does everybody agree with that?
Are you talking about, you're talking about plans that have been implemented or intervention or what? That's a strong word, but...
Well, they're going to be...
What are we doing as a result of what we've identified with the climate results?
Exactly. What were some of the big glaring facts that we're seeing?
Sure.
What they're doing to address those items? And then, once they've addressed them, they're going to come back to the board and let us know where we've addressed these things, this is the change, blah, blah, blah.
That's good. You go with that.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on the agenda for the tenth?
Milestones.
Okay.
So you have an hour.
You have an hour on the September tenth.
But there needs, we need to get something before then. The request for you to complete this preparation sheet, please get that to Mr. Jordan, went out, and today was the, the day that we requested you turn in.
I already turned mine in.
We're, we're halfway there.
I'm done.
The reason why I give you another copy is the, and Dr. King, please, help us with this as well. If everyone turns in the form, then we know if everyone understands the item we're going to be discussing, everyone will say, yeah, I think we ought to do this. And finally, some expectation of when it might be done. So number six has already been addressed just recently. It's just been addressed because we just, of our votes. But we're not going to begin...
Not number, not number six.
Number ten.
Number ten, yeah. We're not going to begin with the first six items because the first... We're not going to begin with the first six items because the first six items are related to the PPEA and whatever. So we'll begin with number seven and move down. There's an emerging item on number seven, just so that you know, we may need to move number seven, as Dr. Gabriel and I chat, to the bottom of the list because there's an emerging item that I think Dr. Robinson and Ms. Doyle had, the governor's school item, that's attached to that. But in any event, we're not going to deal with the first six items, but I really do, we really do need your responses here. We really do. If we don't have your responses, then we can't have a discussion.
Right.
If I could say, three of us said yes, and other five didn't say anything, that's not a good way to begin. So we got to get your responses, if we can get them today or tomorrow, that would be cool. Dr. Gabriel and I are going to meet shortly. Brad, you look confused. You had mentioned an item, and Ms. Doyle had mentioned an item that had come up recently that was related to CTE, right?
But that doesn't move that CTE down to the bottom of the list.
No, not to the bottom, but we're going to need more time. Right now, we only have five minutes to discuss these issues. We're going to need more time. If we spend 30 minutes on that item initially, it could throw us off. We only going to have four or five minutes on each item with an hour.
All right, so in conclusion, you want people to make this document complete today?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's one, no, that's not, that's not it. I also want folks to realize that we only have five minutes per item.
Yeah, there's an hour on the agenda.
In our hour allotment for the agenda for when we meet again.
So I apologize if it was unclear. Moving it to the bottom is not moving it to minimize it, it's to give an opportunity to have a thorough conversation of something...
I just want to be clear, when someone says move something to the bottom, it usually means lower on the priority.
The reason why we may need to do it is if there's something emerging on it, we may need more time than just five minutes. And again, following this get-together, we're going to have a lot more time to process these items. This is not an agreement, this is not a finalization of anything. What this is, is the next step towards moving to making decisions.
I predict, I predict that once we have this meeting, this hour-long on September the 10th, that we'll be looking at an expanded meeting, such as a retreat, to fully delve into these issues. That's just a prediction, so you don't have to respond. We can, Warren.
You can.
So I appreciate the work that Warren and Noel have been doing on this, and especially coming out of our first attempt at this matter. And so I really think when we look at the Policy Committee, the Superintendent Evaluation Committee, now the Master Milestoning Committee, that doing this work by committees this way is really helping us to move items along progressively and to become more efficient as a board. So I'll get this in to you, Warren, pronto?
If you don't have time to do it today, call me, I'll come pick it up.
Tonight, he'll pick it up.
He will drive it in the car while you're...
Dr. King, help, we need yours to... Thanks.
All right, so back to the agenda, though, on September 10th, what we need to do, frankly, Janelle and others, is that we just need to modify some of the timing of some of the presentations because some are going to be a little bit longer than we initially thought.
But not today.
Sorry?
But not today.
No, but this is what we need to do shortly so that we can post it and people have it available. So that's just work that we need to do as a follow-on to tonight. Was there anything else, though, on September 10th before we're thinking of pressing need?
Okay. There's only one other matter, board matter, quickly, and then we can take a break before our executive session. Conferences, of course, we have the legislative, VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference, that's September 11th, and Rodney, you'll be attending that, yes?
Yes.
Okay. And then Q, October the 2nd through the 4th, in Miami, currently I'm the only one that's... Where are you going?
No, I'm not.
Oh.
But there is one that's missing.
Oh, okay.
I mean, that is the hot topic on School Board Matters.
Okay.
Whether it's School Board Matters, that's going to be in Harl's bill on that Friday, October the 3rd.
October 3rd?
Yes.
Hot topic.
Yeah.
You have that, Janelle? You'll be attending that?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ed. Okay, are there any other persons interested in going to Q?
I just had a question, I thought we were limiting the number of people attending these conferences.
Well, no, when we finish the budget, we had, we agreed that there's no sense of keeping these memberships if you're only going to have one person. If it weren't the cost of the memberships.
As long as we have it in the budget.
Right. Okay. 22nd through 26th of October, the Council of Great City Schools, and the reason we're brought over this is because Janelle needs to be able to do her work of, you know, it's registered, and reservations for hotel while the prices and costs are still reasonable as well as transportation. So for Council of Great City Schools in Milwaukee, the 22nd through 26th.
I can't go with that, but I would just encourage the board to, this is a great conference, and probably the best conference that we can go to. And if it's any way, if you haven't gone to that conference, any way that you can clear your schedule to be able to go to that conference, I would encourage you to do it. I found it to be very helpful, I do a lot for attending that.
So I'm certainly interested, I attended it two years ago, and I certainly want to give other folks an opportunity, but I agree, it is a very informative conference. So there are two others, Janelle, certainly, you can put them down without me. If you decide, once you check your schedules that you're able to go, please let me know as soon as possible. And then the VSBA Annual Convention in November in Williamsburg. Now, the retreat, Noel has agreed to be our delegate, that's what I mean, that others can attend, and that is correct, Noel, right?
I agree with you.
Oh, you, okay.
And I'm an alternate.
Okay, all right. I gladly pass that on to you, Rodney.
No, it's the 19th of Wednesday at which we have a board meeting?
Yes. Yes, and we normally move the board meeting to that, I believe, second Wednesday for that purpose.
So we just need to account for that, that it will now be November 12th will be our formal work session?
No, that will be the board meeting.
No, that'll be the formal board meeting.
Oh, that's what I mean, I'm sorry, formal board.
Yes. Okay.
This is not heartbreaking, but I'm out of town on 12th. But I can come in by speakerphone one bit.
Janelle, you have something to say? Okay. You need a count today, Janelle, for VSBA in November?
Yeah, I'll see him.
Okay.
I'll be there. Yeah. Until...
How about if we all email you, Janelle, the dates that we'll be going so that you'll know the nights we need? Can you just maybe start an email to trigger us to do that? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I don't delay this, if we can do it quickly. Federal Relations Networking Meeting, we have Warren down for that in DC, February 2nd through the 4th, yes? And then NSBA in March in Nashville. Okay, Reverend Haywood?
Okay. I'm sorry, it's early, here we go.
Okay. And Mr. Jordan?
Just, it's not only here, but coming from the meeting I just attended, there are plans to do a school and challenge environment summit in December. And many of the things that are coming forward with recommendations tie right into what's coming out of here in Norfolk, and of course, our district probably has one of the highest number of schools that meet the challenge criteria. So it hasn't been a date set, but in December, possibly in Richmond. So I just wanted to put that on your radar screen, and once we figure out here from the VSBA how that progresses, I'll keep you all informed, but I think it'll be an important one for us to attend.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Okay, so those of us who can do school tours on the first day of school, as we customarily do, superintendent asking that, we just contact Elizabeth, let her know that we would like to be placed on that schedule.
Talking about the 2nd?
The 2nd of September, yes, first day of school. Yes. All right. We're at the end of this part of the agenda, any pressing matter before we transition for our break and then executive session for personnel and student support matters? But thank you, we've done good work today. All right? Brief recess, that's 15 minutes, we have scheduled to begin at 5:30 before executive session.